All right. Good afternoon. It is 3:07 PM, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Finance and Performance Committee. I'm pleased to have you here with us today. We are going to go ahead and get started with our subject matter for today, which is Legislative Oversight, a number 240066, Briefing City of Baltimore Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Single Audit for the Year Ending June 30th, 2023. And again, the purpose is to really go over where we are right now, some of the challenges that we face, but also where some of our opportunities are. We do understand that there have been some delays, and so we'll get a little insight into as to why that happened. But also, as everyone understands, that audits are a very critical point in terms of city governance, if we're talking about accountability, transparency, and then also having a roadmap of where we go from here. So again, we really appreciate everyone being here, whether we're talking about folks who are from the Department of Finance, Department of Audits, but also our representatives in the mayor's office who we see, and also from the City Council President's office. I know that we're going to have several presentations, and I want to be respectful of people's time and don't want to belabor the point, so we can go ahead and jump right in. We do know there are several members who will be joining us later, hopefully. We do know one has excused absence, which is Councilmember Porter. And I would also say that I'm very thankful for our committee staff, Marguerite Curran, who always keeps me on point as well as everyone else. So again, always thank you for being here and doing the work that you do. So again, without further ado, we will go ahead and get started. I believe first we'll have Josh Pash first for opening remarks. So thank you for being with us. And we're working on getting that presentation, so.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman Councilman. My name is Josh Pash, and I'm the City Auditor, and I'm here with Department of Finance and SB and Company, the external auditors, to brief on the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2023. Next slide. Actually, previous slide, okay. I will go over key parties, audit process overview, and examples of shared responsibilities. What I want to do is to give a general overview, a big picture for context of what the audit is and what the sharing responsibilities between SB and Department of Audits is. Next slide. So at a high level, the annual financial report, Department of Finance prepares it, the financial statements. The City Auditor and SB and Company do a co-audit of those financial statements, and the result is the audited financial statements. In brief, financial statements give a financial picture of the city for the year. At a fundamental level, we're presenting revenues and expenditures and assets and liabilities. There is more information included, which Department of Finance will elaborate. And then the audited financial statements, basically, the audit certifies that the financial statements as presented are materially accurate. And what that means is they won't affect a normal user decision. For example, if there is a bond issuer, their decision would not be modified if they, based on the material accuracy. There are also additional reports from the auditors, and SB and Company can elaborate on those. Next slide, please.
And as you keep going, I just wanted to also note that we've been joined by Councilmember Z. Cohen of the 5th District. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So at a high level, the audit process is planning. The City Auditor and SB and Company share that. That is gaining an understanding of the city and designing the testing procedures, the field work, which is done jointly by the City Auditor and SB and Company, which is testing the numbers to verify the accuracy and give assurance on those numbers, and then reporting, which is what we're discussing here, and SB and Company prepares the report. Next slide. So we were asked to give an explanation of the allocation of the audit work. So audit testing is broken down into different sections. I'm not going to list all of them, but give an example of how SB and Company and Department of Audits allocate audit work. So here's an example of four sections: payroll, self-insurance, grant compliance, and IT general controls. City Auditor does most of the testing on payroll. We share the testing on self-insurance and grant compliance. We share the testing, and then IT general control reviews are done by SB and Company. And this gets tweaked and modified each year when we do the planning of the audit. Next slide, please. So here's an example of allocation of work for control testing. The control testing is the auditor gaining an understanding of the internal controls over financial processes. And as you can see, there are walkthroughs and test controls done between the City Auditor and SB and Company. For example, gaining an understanding for budgeting is done by the City Auditor, and gaining an understanding over revenue grants is done by SB and Company. And then testing those controls, as you can see, for example, of budgeting would be done by the City Auditor, and overestimates would be done by SB and Company. Next slide. So here's an example of the breakout of substantive testing. And the substantive testing is basically the testing of the accounts to assess that material accuracy that I spoke about. And then, as an example, testing cash is done mostly by the City Auditors. And then the testing of property tax receivable is done mostly by SB and Company. And that is my general overview. I'll take any questions, and if there are none, I will pass it over to SB and Company.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Seymour. I'm the engagement partner with SB and Company. Thank you for the opportunity to present the results of the 2023 financial statement as well as single audit. And I have a presentation that I was going to walk through. If you could pull it up, please.
Yes, please, and thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If you could start on Slide 3. Go back one slide, please. Perfect. Thank you. These scope of services, we were engaged to perform an audit of the June 30th, 2023 financial statements of the city, and then specifically for enterprise funds, the water utility fund, wastewater utility fund, stormwater, and parking facilities. Also, we were engaged and we did perform what's called a Uniform Grant Guidance Audit, what we used to call the Single Audit. That is an audit that's required by the federal government for all recipients of federal grant assistance that an entity receives in excess of $750,000. As a note, in fiscal year '25, that limit will actually be moved up to $1 million, but the city historically has received well in excess of those funds and would continue to be required to have the Uniform Grant Guidance, or if you will, Single Audit. As part of the Single Audit, there is a data collection form. That form takes the Single Audit and puts it in a fit and format for reporting for the federal government. Included in the Single Audit is a report on internal controls and financial reporting. We have our observations or recommendations here. As part of the city's annual comprehensive financial report, there are certain entities that we did not perform the audits on and rather relied the opinions of other auditors for the pension trust funds, employees' retirement system, elected officials' retirement system, fire and police retirement system, the Baltimore City Public School System, as well as the Baltimore Hotel Corporation. The city did make certain adjustments to the Baltimore City Public School System financial statements, which we audited and took responsibility for. We go to Slide 5, two up, please. This is a pictorial of our audit approach. It's a risk-based audit approach. The idea behind this is we identify where the areas of material financial misstatement risk are, and then we go through a process to assess and test the controls as put in place by management that would otherwise mitigate that risk. Then we perform certain analytical procedures, substantive procedures, and other audit standard required items. This entire process is designed to allow us to garner sufficient audit evidence to be able to issue the opinions that we have. And I'll go to the next slide, please. And this is a slide that we look at for kind of how we evaluate and test controls and looking at, you know, the different types, whether it's a specific control, what we would term a pervasive control, monitoring control that would be in place, and looking at how the process of information flows through that process to ultimately end within the numbers in the financial statements. Slide 7, please. We also assess what we call the control environment by using the COSO model of internal controls. That is the five interrelated components of the control environment, risk assessment, specific control activities, monitoring activities, and information and communication. In a lot of ways, we call this the tone at the top and looking at that through the process. Slide 8.
Yes, ma'am. We just want to make sure it's being shared with the public, so make sure everyone's seeing what you're saying. All right, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. On Slide 8 here is our identified significant risk areas. The treasury function, looking at cash, investments, debt, debt accounting, the estimation process that management goes through, financial reporting, expenditures, payroll, as well as revenue. The City Auditor brought up kind of how we share responsibilities and working through the testing of these individual areas. Next slide, please. We also looked at fixed assets, compliance, grants management, and then as well as information technology. I would caution that the information technology we did was more tailored to the systems that hold the financial reporting information and not an overall assessment of the entire city. On Slide 11, goes through the different sections of the annual comprehensive report. The first section is the introductory section. That's the section that management goes through and provides a letter of transmittal and other background information on the city. Our responsibility related to that is to read that information. And if there is information that is materially inconsistent with the information that's concluded in the financial statements, we would first tell management, and then if management did not make the change, we would have an additional paragraph in our audit opinion. We had no issues there. Within what we call the financial section, that's our audit opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, the basic statements themselves, notes to those statements, the required supplementary information, as well as combining an individual fund statements. Our responsibility, the opinion, is our opinion that we provide. The MDNA is not audited, however, it is reviewed for consistency within the financial statements. Then, within the government-wide statements, we issue an opinion for that. The component unit information I mentioned earlier is audited by other auditors, so we review that information to determine whether we believe such information is correct. And then the fund-level statements, we opine upon. The notes we opine upon require supplemental information. We're reviewing it for consistency. And then the combining and individual fund statements, we are making sure that those amounts are reasonable in relation to the statements taken as a whole. The entire statistical section, our responsibility is to review that information for consistency. Next slide, please. The results of our audit. We issued an unmodified opinion, or if you will, a clean opinion on the financial statements. What that states is the statements as presented by management are reasonably free of material misstatement. We did not, during the course of the audit, discover any instances of material fraud. We were made aware of an instance post-audit that occurred. We received the full cooperation of management. We'll talk in a little bit of some of the material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in internal controls and the related recommendations that go along with those. Next slide, please. So when an auditor speaks about deficiencies in controls, there's really three levels of what we would say the severity of those issues are. The first of which is a deficiency. That means that we found a problem. That when we just say that there's a deficiency, typically, there's some other compensating control. So somewhere along the process, one part of it was broken, but somewhere else it made up for those areas. I'm going to jump to material weakness and come back to significant deficiency. Material weakness is the strongest language that we can use as auditors. Effectively, what that says is that the controls as designed may not prevent or detect a material error from occurring within the statements. And so, if you will, what that typically means is that during the course of the audit, we found audit adjustments or other information that was inconsistent and required changing. So if you think of the process, management prepares the statements, provides us with information, we go and we agree information. When things don't work, then we say, well, there had to be some kind of problem. And if that difference is material, then we use the term material weakness. A significant deficiency is kind of in the middle between the two, so it's an item that is not large enough that we would consider a material weakness, but is more significant than just a plain deficiency. And so, if you will, if you have a combination of those, that could turn into a material weakness. On the next slide, or the areas, the next two slides are the areas in which we determined that there were material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting. The first of which is an overall financial reporting function item that we noted post-year-end adjustments related to different areas of fixed assets, water and wastewater billing, as well as that there is other areas where cash reconciliations were not performed timely. And as a result, if there were errors, they would not be detected in the proper amount of time. Grant accounting within the various departments, there was issues that we noted and variations between the amounts that were included within the financial statements and then the individual amounts that were recorded by the departments. Water and wastewater, the billing function, noting that there's errors in billing that were there that require manual adjustments and working through those amounts. Fixed asset accounting, I mentioned it earlier that there were certain errors that were noted, double counting on different areas that occurred. And then information technology. We noticed certain vulnerabilities in kind of how the system is set up that lead to a risk that could be exploited by bad actors. We can provide additional information. I would prefer not to do that in a public setting as we don't want to tell people specifically what the items were. And then lastly, the Schedule of Federal Awards, or what we term the CIFA. There were a number of errors that were detected, whether it was the amounts that were passed through the subrecipients or amounts not reconciling between what was included in the Schedule of Federal Awards to the underlying information that the department had and that those amounts could not be reconciled. If I jump ahead two slides. The goals, so the Uniform Guidance Audit or Single Audit. The idea behind this audit is really, if you follow the term "single audit", so instead of having the federal government come in and do the audit, the state of Maryland come in and do the audit, us as external auditors do the audit, and others come in and do the audit. The idea was, as the federal government said, we can use one audit, which the federal government writes the areas and the procedures to be performed. And the idea behind that is that would lessen the number of audits. You know, doing a single audit does not preclude the federal government from exercising oversight or pass through entities like the state of Maryland from doing that. But however, it does provide that the information has been audited through those processes. The next slide, please, goes over some of the major areas that we went through, the different testing items that we had within Uniform Guidance being allowable cost. That is ensuring that the grantee is spending the money in a fit and format that meets the requirements of the federal government compliance standards. Cash management, that we're complying with the rules that are set forth by the federal government, and how it is that we're seeking reimbursement or when we get money in an advance form. Matching, that is where grants require a local match, that that local match actually occurred. The reporting function, that is taking, throughout the year, grants have different reporting requirements and ensuring that the information that was included in the reporting matches back to the audited information. And then subrecipient monitoring. And this is really a significant change under Uniform Guidance. It used to be subrecipient monitoring was as simple as making sure that whomever you passed the grants through to, that they had their Single Audit completed timely as well. Under Uniform Guidance, now is what's required is actually a risk assessment. So when you, before you make the grant, you're required to go through a process to assess the risk of non-compliance of that sub-grantee, then going through and monitoring whether or not that grantee complied with the terms and tying it back to the areas that you designed in your risk assessment. I would note that the federal government does the same exact items when they're granting funds to grantees, that they go through and they do a risk, they're required to do a risk assessment and perform monitoring on those. So a lot of ways, when we use the term "subrecipient monitoring", what it means is now we're stepping in the role of oversight for the federal government. Next slide, please. So this goes over the results of the Single Audit. As I mentioned earlier, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. We noted material weaknesses in financial reporting controls as well as significant deficiencies. We had certain programs, which we've issued what we term a qualified opinion. That is an opinion where either the evidence did not support that the city complied, or we were not provided sufficient evidence to determine that they did comply. And those areas that we had issued a qualified opinion, including the programs of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, the ending the HIV epidemic, medical assistance program, HIV emergency relief project grants, and HIV prevention activities. We had other findings in some of the other programs, but they were not significant enough to warrant a qualified opinion there. On the next slide, Slide 20, shows the individual programs that were tested during the course of the fiscal year '23 Single Audit. As part of Uniform Guidance, there is a process that we go through in how we're required to select certain programs based upon risk of those programs. The standard one is that each of your major programs need to be tested once every three years. If during the course of those audits, we find significant problems, then it becomes mandatory high risk for the following year. And you can see in this case, we tested just under $159 million. There was a total of $310, just over $310 million of federal awards. The city is not considered a low-risk auditee, and so the standard requires that we get a minimum of 40%. And you can see here that we tested in excess of that 40% and got to 51%.
Really quickly, just want to say that we've been joined by Councilmember Schleifer of the 5th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, and also see representatives from the Comptroller's Office. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. On this slide, we've listed out the summary of the different findings. And you can see the material weaknesses surrounding reporting, cash management, eligibility, subrecipient monitoring primarily, and reporting for significant deficiencies lower in there. On Slide 22 summarizes those individual findings. For cash management, what we determined that there were certain instances that the support that was provided by management did not reconcile to the actual amount of the drawdowns that were made into the federal database. For eligibility, we noted instances where there wasn't evidence of review of participant files for eligibility requirements, or we were not able to be provided evidence of third-party verification or documentation of income, assets, medical expenses, and other required pertinent information. For subrecipients, we noted that there was instances where a risk assessment, we weren't provided evidence that the risk assessment was performed. There was certain required information that's included in the contract that was not included. We weren't able to be provided evidence that the monitoring during the course of the year was performed and that the, lastly, that there are certain instances where the subrecipients' active registration in the system of award management, or SAM for the federal government, that it was not verified. And for reporting, where we saw that the reporting that went during the course of the fiscal year under audit did not agree to the support that was provided, or there was not evidence of that support. And so, and I know management will speak to each of these, but really, it's a training and policies and procedures process. And moving to the next slide, I'm sorry, to address each of these areas and the diligence to include the documentation, so that way we are able to, when we do the audit, to have the information so we can forgive the word, but check the box and say, yep, this is what was supposed to happen, and we have the evidence to say that it did occur. I do want to thank Michael Ioanna and the entire team for their help. Getting through an audit is a significant undertaking. We ask a lot of questions. We go through and request a lot of information. And if you will, on the hierarchy of what management has to do on a day-in and day-out basis, typically, dealing with auditors is not number one on the list. So do appreciate all of the help in getting us information. The remainder of our presentation goes through our specific required communications. I've highlighted all the areas that I'm required to bring to your attention. There's nothing else, if you will, of a negative nature that I would be required to. And I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Well, again, I'll just say thank you for your report. There are a couple of things that came out there. Not so much questions, but there are somewhat comments about things that we know we've experienced as a city. So as you mentioned, you know, obviously, something that we've all dealt with in our districts is around water billing and some of the challenges there. So I'm glad that you highlighted that. When you talk about IT, obviously, we went through a whole ransomware experience years ago with our city, so we know that's an issue. But then also, in terms of the federal awards, I know there have been some challenges that we had over time as it relates to federal money and possibly losing federal money and then trying to get it restored. So I know you've kind of given voice to that. So again, I do appreciate that. Did you want to keep going, or do you want to switch to?
I can turn it over. Thank you very much.
Well, I would say this worked out perfectly because we switched the order a bit, but I definitely want to hear from Finance before we open it up to questions, unless there are any pressing questions right now. So, and Finance, as you get into your presentation, I know some of it is around the communication with the auditor, and then some of it is also around some of the challenges that we've experienced. So if you can address all of that in your presentation, love it. So please feel free to go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Michael Moxton. I am the Director of the Baltimore City Department of Finance. And I'll start by saying the ACFA is a very important tool for us, for the city and for our partners, to align around one single independently verified set of numbers. It's also a stepping stone for the completion of the annual Single Audit and other federal requirements. So this past spring, we completed our first ACFA under the Workday environment for the 2023 fiscal year. The system change directly addresses past audit findings, which had repeatedly noted the city's lack of a unified system of record as a material weakness. But the change did come with a learning curve, and that, along with staff turnover, contributed to a publication date that was passed the state's December 31st guideline. Now, while we did apply for and receive an extension through April 30th, and then we ultimately finalized the ACFA on April 12th, we're putting plans and resources in place to reduce and ultimately eliminate the need for such extensions in the future. I'm now going to pass it over to the Deputy Finance Director, Ioanna Moisides, to take you through the presentation, take you through the details of the ACFA as well as the Single Audit, and go over the findings that you just heard about and explain the corrective actions. actions that have already been taken or are currently underway to address each item.
Thank you, Director Ioana Moisides, Deputy Director of Finance. I am glad to be here in front of the committee and also thankful to our partners SB and of course, the Department of Audits for their continuing diligence and support. I, I thought at the outset, Chairman Bullock, you mentioned a roadmap of progress. And I think that that's, you know, our focus. And to Bill's point, his calls are actually super important. And I will say that the Department of Finance, this is one of our number one priorities. And we are going to get it straight. We have a tremendous team, not just in the Department of Finance, but throughout the city that has been working to support the effort in various ways. So you mentioned DPW or BSIT, but also mentioning some of the work of the Office of Performance Innovation and convening groups to do improvements in water billing. That actually directly impacts some of the findings in this audit. And then you look at the support of the Grants Management Committee, also led by OPI and by the city administrator, and our Grants Management Team, which has recently expanded with the hiring of our Grants Director, which is in fact, one of the corrective actions, recognizing the staffing needs. And so we'll talk in more detail about that. I'll talk very briefly about what is the ACFA and the information contained because obviously SB did a phenomenal job on that. And then we'll talk about the ACFA timeline for the city and the process improvements we have for that, and then address directly and highlight some of our corrective actions as relates to the findings. So just looking at the ACFA, and I think in SB's presentation around slide 11, they referenced kind of the components of the ACFA. One thing that I think is important for the public and for non-auditors or folks that are not in finance to remember is that the ACFA is a lot of different information coming from both inputs that the Department of Finance has, like our general ledger, but also external components as well. And it is not as simple as pushing a button. So almost every line of the ACFA relates to, in some cases, the decision, right, between the standards of accounting and what should be included in certain areas and what shouldn't. And when we speak about staffing, turnover, and our transition, that kind of lends to why it was a little difficult, frankly, to get the ACFA out this time. We had a transition of some institutional knowledge who were the folks who were parts of those earlier decisions about why something went in a certain category or how we had made an adjustment in a prior year. And to my right is Chief Raby, our bureau chief for the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. She arrived in, in April and undertook kind of diving right in and learning some of that background and working with her team. And so the ACFA, as mentioned, has those three components, right? The introduction, the financial and statistical. As mentioned, it has the same format for everyone, so you should be able to pick up an ACFA for somewhere in Florida municipality and find the same information in the same format. And I will actually turn it over to the ACFA timeline because I think that is the part
Good afternoon. Victoria Levy, acting chief of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. And excited to, as an accounting nerd, have an opportunity, right, to bring forward a financial report and audit results and things of that nature. So SB and company did a great job sharing what's, you know, within the 180 pages here and some of the work that goes in to prepare that. So, but what many are interested in is our timeline. And this would now be slide six in the presentation. And as was highlighted before, COMAR state regulations require guidelines for the ACFA. We could go back one more, but it's the same, same, same appeal. By December 31st, there is an extension process. So for FY23, which you are seeing in front of you, we had received that extension and met that with completion by April 12th. But moving to the next slide, what are we doing for FY24? What are our targets? And how do we, how close in what is a transition year can we get to our ultimate goal of December 31st? So what we are committed to and conservatively committed to is filing the FY24 ACFA by February 28th and being in open communication with the state and our state partners about delivery of that report. What will also follow is the single audit, which will be filed within 30 days, as is required, which will meet the March 31st deadline, which will bring the city back in compliance with federal reporting requirements. And some of the items that are enabling us to do this, to make these strides forward, is some of the natural efficiencies that we are gaining in year two, right? So last year was probably the, the climb of our mountain of being in a new system, a new chart of accounts. It really is a challenging environment and it takes time to kind of get, get to where you had kind of been used to. We are also leveraging some of those technology resources that have become available with the centralized ERP, including, I'm a little abashed to say, this 180 pages here is the product of a Word file and dozens and dozens and dozens of Excel workbooks, which you can imagine has its challenges. And we in FY24 have brought forward a platform that other resources are using to directly more closely link Workday to the final report. So that gives us a lot of opportunities to get to this end result in an expedient manner with also less challenges, less, less number checks. So that is our aims for FY24. Are there questions about that timeline?
Councilmember Slifer.
Yes, thank you. What's the name of the program that you're using?
We're using WORKIVA.
What's it called?
WORKIVA. So it is a.
Not related to WAKOVIA, right?
No.
Can you spell it for me?
It, it is in the slide, but it's WORKIVA, W-O-R-K-I-V-A. And it has been used by the, by BBMR to prepare the budget books. So that was actually when you saw the FY25 budget, used that tool. We are using it for the ACFA and we believe that, I believe the Department of Planning is also looking for some of their publications to kind of use that tool and platform.
And so how, how does that, you were saying that interfaces with Workday. So how does that, what does that look like?
So it helps basically keep the numbers tight and together. So being able to, I'm going to get a little counting on you, but export a trial balance and map that trial balance directly into the financial statements. So saying these funds, these ledger accounts, these balances make up that number. And it's in basically an automated summation as opposed to having to put the pieces together manually in Excel.
Quick related question, though. Is, is that part of the efficiencies that you were talking about or is that, because you mentioned efficiencies gained in year two.
That is actually something we've added on top. So we've kind of also made a, a large step forward with that. So we knew that the, it was a need to improve and move away from manual Excel files, but wanted to get a first year using the Workday data before being able to kind of add that next tier on. So it's, it's above and beyond just natural year two.
And so were you able to upload all of those spreadsheets that you were talking about into the system?
So we worked with a consulting partner over a period of four months with two very valuable members of my team to implement, to basically reproduce 23 in that environment so that we could then do it in 24.
Oh, so this, WORKIVA doesn't, they didn't handle that, that initial like upload and?
Yeah, so this is complex, is, is, is kind of an oversimplification, but it's not, there is a lot of where does this account go? Where does this fund, where, if you have a number in footnote two, where does, what accounts make that up? So all of that has to be built. Basically, it all has to be coded. It has to, you have to build the formulas and mechanisms to then gain that automation. So we spent about four months doing so.
Okay, so now it's at a point where you could upload the historical data and it'll have the correct tags that's searchable and everything?
That is all of our fingers crossed that we are, so we're preparing the FY24 ACFA now.
So we don't know yet if it's going to work or if we're going to end up with some funky data from like?
We're confident it will work because it's sourced data from Workday. So it is underlying financial transactions. We just do know that there might be some, you know, challenges or bumps along the way when you, you know, like I said, going a little technical, but for example, we've added new accounts, you know, we've got to add those to our mapping. We've got to add in data. So there's still, you know, work to be done to ensure that the information we're reporting is accurate.
Gotcha. And so just, and I'm sorry if you, if you already said this, but so this is going to go towards creating next year's budget books?
So you're, you're, you've actually already seen a budget book produced in WORKIVA.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's already been done?
Yes. But it's not, like I said, WORKIVA is a tool. It's kind of like fancy Excel and Word, but you have to build it. You have to have it produce the results you want. So I can't speak to the budget team's experience, but I do know they successfully used that in the FY25.
It looks like you only have a couple of slides left, so you want to just go through the slides and then we'll?
Sure.
You got a question now?
Yeah, but I can wait.
Okay, so you finish the slides and then Councilman Cohen, you'll be up first.
All right. Well, and so we've included in here where if members of council or members of the public, so we'll go forward two slides, where if you don't want a handy dandy printed bound, you know, lovely addition to your bookshelf, where you can find a copy of the ACFA's. They are both on the Department of Finance's website and they are often added to the Department of Audit's reports listing. So both the ACFA and the single audit are available online or will be available, the single audit, we got the PDF copy this morning. So that will be in the coming days. And what we have shared here, so it is a good opportunity if there are questions, because the remainder of our presentation is responding and providing responses to the findings that have been shared and kind of the corrective action and the work that's being done. Happy to go through each of those, but if there are any overarching questions, this might be a good opportunity.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the whole team that's here. Thank you for your presentation. Completely appreciate and understand some of the improvements in technology and process that it seems like you are, all are endeavoring on. I'm a little unclear, though, sort of why the deadlines were missed last year and sort of, can you help the council understand why, for example, according to the testimony at the BOE hearing, the ACFA was made available online in April 2024, but the BOE and the council received the audit in June 2024? Curious about the delay, curious, you know, in terms of the state of Maryland and missing the deadlines there, just like what happened? And how, yeah, if you could just walk us through that?
Yeah, certainly. So I'll share the generalized timeline in kind of a normal year and then share what FY23 brought forward. So we're a June 30 fiscal year end. So typically the months of July and August are a period in which there are a fair amount of adjustments. So that, those are adjustments for accounting data that may not be available until year end. So you spend, you know, 30 to 60 days doing a year end closeout process. Then you would prepare, and this is what we're in the midst of now, the month of September, you would take those data, you'd take those final results and update them to put in the financial reporting framework because our normal operations is not necessarily the accounting standards, which we then provide to the auditors, October, November, for them to review those results, do their testing and produce an audit report ideally by the month of December, like December 31st. So for FY23, there were, a normal two-month close process was not possible because there was a lot of year one data kind of analysis and cleanup. So that was, we went live with Workday in August of the fiscal year. So there are a lot of things that when you go to pull together the financial results and you see the account and you go, something's, something is perhaps not as we would like to classify it or display it or isn't correct. And so doing the work to go through the conversion data, go back to the old system and see what were the numbers there? How did we bring them over? Is it a matter of mapping? Is it like kind of all of that nitty gritty? Takes a period of time. I will also share, this is my understanding, and I will defer to other members of finance. Didn't have the pleasure of being a member of the team during that time, but you also have additional challenges of, of team members who, you know, have, have a responsibility in the financial report and they've been using a specific tool for 10, 15 years and now they have a new tool, right? And so there's just some natural things that take longer to get the same result in a year of transition. Is where I will probably leave that at this moment for additional follow-up.
Okay, so just to understand it, so the problem was we converted to Workday and folks couldn't figure out how to make the, I mean, because it has real implications, right? It is not a good look for us to miss deadlines. It is not a good look for us to miss state deadlines, federal deadlines, like just trying to, again, Workday is a tool, right? That many other municipalities across the country utilize. It seems like it has been caused all these challenges here in Baltimore and I'm just trying to like, understand why.
So no matter what tool you're moving to, it is a dramatic change, right? Like it is in the, in the accounting realm, right? Like it's moving from the East Coast to the West Coast. Doesn't matter what system you're going from. It is going, it, it's just, it's a dramatic change. And making sure that the results are correct and accurate, it, it, there is additional time that's involved. We did during FY23 remain in constant communication with our state partners, right? So that extension through April, making sure that the state's legislative office knew the state was in receipt of our information to include all of the city's data in statewide reporting. So we did, in a difficult circumstance, ensure that we, as best as we could, maintain those relationships and communications.
Right, absolutely. And just to kind of add at a higher level, this kind of system transition is not easy in Baltimore, but it's not easy in any city or state or jurisdiction. And I can say that coming from another place relatively recently. WORKIVA actually did a survey just before the pandemic of states and their ACFA's and they found that almost half the states were missing their, so their ACFA deadline, that six-month time window by significant amounts. So that's not to say that it's okay for us to be late, but this is not a unique problem. And what we've done here is put, put the work and made the investment to get onto a system that we now can pull data from. We, just to kind of put, put it in context of the different risk factors at the state level, the state does have a potential penalty in place for missing the ACFA deadline. That penalty is if the ACFA deadline is missed by two years or more, then the state can withhold cash flow. And I'm sort of saying that for context in that this is perhaps the most difficult point. The, this 2023 ACFA that we just completed was our, was our low watermark and we will improve from there. But we are absolutely using national best practices to get this done and we're confident that we're going to make improvements every year.
And if I could speak to the specific question about the timing in the April versus the notation at the BOE, just to repeat what I had mentioned at the BOE, in the past historically, both reports, the ACFA and the single audit, were presented to the Board of Estimates together, in part because when you present them together, it frankly is more understandable and allows you to kind of have one conversation. So when we completed it, I posted it promptly on the website, but was not aware of the desire of the Board of Estimates to have that first. So the intention was solely, and, and I will accept that, to fall in line with what, what we had done in the past or what I had known we, us to do in the past. And as soon as we knew that's why you saw the June BOE, I've already talked. um, I've already talked with the Department of Audits and, um, they will be submitting the Single Audit, so that will also be noted at the Board of Estimates and we'll go back again, um, and have, you know, the discussion again as well on the Single Audit.
Got it. That's helpful. Um, I, I, I would just say that, um, you know, i- i- it seems like Workday has tripped us up in several ways. Like I'm still hearing from a few of our municipal unions that they're having challenges with it. Um, and so, I, you know, I mean, obviously we're paying for the service. It's, uh, I, I understand any of these things, you know, you switch from one to another. It's gonna, there's gonna be bumps and it's gonna be complicated, but it does seem like this has been a particular challenge. And if it threw our whole ACFIR process into somewhat of disarray, you know, not to.
And, and what I would highlight is the opportunity that it provides us. So there was the challenge of implementation that is inherent in any system, but there are so many, um, financial reporting opportunities that exist within Workday that we didn't have. And we'll touch on some of them when we go through the findings. Like when you look at our grant reporting and capturing data and being able to produce the Single Audit and, and things of that nature, we now have the capability to do that in one system where we didn't even have the ability to collect that information before. So we have, you know, a rough period of implementation, absolutely, but really major gains and benefits, including for example transparency. Now you have an accounting system that all agencies can interact with and see the data. And what that helps us do is have more accurate results, right? So rather than having one centralized team, we're looking at all of the results, you have more hands to ensure accuracy, you have that transparency. So yes, implementation challenges, but really long-term benefits to be able to address a lot of what have been persistent, um, financial reporting, accounting, grant challenges.
And, and thank you, Councilman Cohen, for raising the Workday issue, cause I know that was something that we all, um, were concerned about. Um, a related question to what Councilman Cohen, um, just asked. So in terms of the ACFIR and the, and the Single Audit, do you, do you expect that they will be completed and submitted to federal government, state government on, on time this year going forward?
So we have a, um, timeline that submits to the state by the ACFIR by February twenty eighth and to, and the Single Audit by March thirty first. So, um, we will highlight that, um, obviously our ultimate goal is December thirty first for the ACFIR, which based on federal guidelines, will give us a January thirty first deadline for the Single Audit. Um, cause you actually only have thirty days after you publish one to publish the other. Um, so we have been conservative in those promises to ensure that there is not an ounce of delay or ability to miss that deadline. And in full transparency, we're also prepared for the fact that, um, for instance, I joined the team in April. Um, FY twenty four will be, um, my first, uh, full go-around with the ACFIR. We've also had some, um, other significant accounting managerial changes. So we just are preparing for the unforeseen, um, with deadlines that we can, um, fully and committedly meet.
Awesome. And then one other piece, and I'm glad you mentioned it because one of the concerns that a, a number of us had when there were reports about, you know, issues with grants and grant money and potentially losing grant money. And I'm glad you mentioned that there's a, a director that's been hired. Can you talk a little bit about that and, and in terms of the director's role and what's been happening thus far?
Sure, so. Certainly. Um, so a, a couple of things, um, in the slides you'll see and, and Chief Raby can talk to, um, the improvals and the, the improvement in the internal controls as relates to Workday. So the ability to know a start and end date of a grant and stop spending, um, the ability to know that expenses go to a certain grant and to, to be able to monitor those and review those and before the spend happens, right? So when the requisition is put in and the tags are there, things are getting routed on those spend business processes to the actual grant managers, not just the agency fiscal staff who actually may not know the requirements of the grant. Those, that is a sea change in what we're able to do. So that's sort of the system and on the accounting side. Um, in terms of the Grants Management Office, um, we've kind of scoped out the, the vision for that office and we understand it will be a phased approach. And phased in the sense that, you know, on day one, we have our existing staff in that office, plus we have the Grants Director. And the team has really been charged with identifying the short-term and long-term plan. And similar to what we did with the procurement transformation where we brought in a new, um, leader to kind of work with the team and work with stakeholders throughout the city, we've asked this Grants Director to come in, um, and do something similar, which is your short-term plan and then longer term, what does more centralized grants management look like in the city? What should the staffing look like in the key critical areas, uh, some of which, you know, we've already talked about? So I heard reference training, right? What training is needed, not just within the Department of Finance, but citywide to support kind of new changes? And Bill, um, Seymour from SB mentioned, um, sub recipients and the changes, um, that are required for monitoring those sub recipients. How are we communicating that throughout the city? How do we ensure that that's standardized across the city, right? So this centralized unit should be able to support those training needs of the city. And special plug, I'm really happy to report, um, again, with the assistance of Chief Raby and the existing Grants Management Staff, and I think our new Director of Grants joined in the very last training. Um, we have had since May, I think it's about ten training sessions, all of which have had seventy or more people, I think the highest number I saw was ninety-five. We have never had that in the decade I've been with the city. It is a sea change to be able to offer citywide centralized training on how do you bill? Um, what do you do to manage sub recipients as well as regular, um, conversations? So what, what the team has done is set up a bi-weekly cadence. Uh, one week is a specialized kind of structured training that's recorded um, and that allows people to kind of learn, uh, whatever the topic of the day is. And then the following bi-weekly session is more of a discussion where agency staff bring their questions, their concerns, and new information is shared by both the Grants Management Office and the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. Again, that kind of partnership did not exist before and very thankful to be able to see that develop because that's been something that we've been intent on developing, um, for many years. And, um, there really has just been a sea change. Part of that, Councilman Cohen, um, to your question about Workday, you know, Workday is just a tool and it's not because of Workday that we're able to meet, right? But Workday, because it was a centralized source of information and because when we're all working from the same data, we all have to understand it, we have to communicate about it. We know that if HR makes a change in a field that's required, that could impact grants. All of that helps us to work together. And so, um, citywide, we are now on a weekly basis, meeting in more regular ways for both fiscal, HR and payroll teams. Um, in fact, um, I'm really excited that our Workday Financial User Group, which is kind of a Workday, um, group where finance users around the city can bring their questions, bring their topics. Our last attendance was a hundred and it's been batting over ninety participants. And that's every week, people are gathering kind of to talk, to do self-help, to become leaders in their own right and present, um, you know, an agency will say, I figured out an answer to this. So, um, sorry, I get excited. Uh, but going back to specifically the Grants Management Office, um, looking to develop that grants oversight and compliance. And so, you know, the first part will really be the Grants Management Office. We have existing reporting, um, Victoria mentioned some that relates to, you know, how do we know how many grants we have, what their beginning and end dates are? Are they set up correctly? Do they have award attachments? There is capability in Workday that we've now trained agencies on that's almost like a to-do. It will trigger a reminder on reporting requirements, right? So very helpful, but what's that centralized unit that's gonna look at? Is that being done? Are there reporting to-do set up on a particular grant? And so, um, the Grants Management Team is working on what that oversight and compliance will look like and knowing that in that first six months to a year, there's gonna be a more bare-bones structure. And as it grows and they, um, identify resources or staffing and they get the feel of it, they'll be able to understand how that oversight and compliance should look, um, in the future. Um, budget development, so are agencies accurately, um, including grants in their budget, are they monitoring? Um, that'll be another function of the Grants Management Office. Um, and then of course, as we mentioned, Technical Workday kind of being part of those business process flows so that they're approving, um, grants-related approval processes, whether those are creating the grant award, closing out the grant award, or the spend on the grant award. We are looking, um, tentatively, um, to have a, a fairly flushed-out initial plan, um, knowing that the Grants, uh, Director is doing a needs assessment survey. Um, she's been meeting with, um, agency stakeholders extensively. Uh, we have a big Grants Management Coordinating Committee meeting where she'll be getting additional feedback. Uh, that will all go back to the team, but, um, I've seen the, the bare bones of the plan and, um, we look forward to having that soon. And, you know, would certainly be happy to, um, volunteer to, uh, meet with members of council or do presentations as is appropriate.
Much appreciated. And I'll just say, I also appreciate what seems to be an ongoing conversation between finance and SB. And I'm curious, um, since you had mentioned, um, SB in terms of the material weaknesses and your estimation, is this addressing those concerns? Uh, I mean, it seems like we're moving in the right direction, but I want to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, I think, we'd go through and say, I think the important, uh, item that was stated is, is that, you know, Workday is a tool. And really what's the important part is what is the structure that you put around the tool? And what is, you know, the, talking about the meetings and the items that are occurring and having people get the information, having people get the training to be able to comply with whether it's an accounting standard or whether it's a grant, uh, standard that would be there and it's steps that are being taken, uh, to be able to get there. I would forewarn however, that even if there, it's perfect, you know, if you will, from an audit perspective, once we get to a material weakness, you have to be almost perfect for us to remove the material weakness. And as well too, with the reporting process, that it takes time. So lots of times when you do an audit, you report, even if we hit the accelerate or the normal deadlines of, you know, December thirty first and January thirty first, you're halfway through the next fiscal year before you're finishing those items. And so if there's a problem, it typically takes a two to three-year cycle to be able to address, uh, where, where those items are. But, you know, from an external perspective, these are the items that lead to success in removing, uh, you know, significant efficiencies and material weaknesses, uh, from occurring and gives us the opportunity to move from where it is and, and issue that's historic to now being, you can point to, we are continuing to develop. And that is a seismic shift in, in looking at some of, some of the areas that we've had historical problems in.
Thank you for walking us through that and managing expectations, that's helpful. Um, also, I'm curious about, you mentioned uptick in participation in training, what do you attribute that to?
Um, I attribute it to, one, I, I think the commitment of leadership. So I will say, um, and this predates Director Voxton, but then certainly absolutely continued under his leadership, um, and C A Leach, to, one, a commitment to resolving the issue. So I will say that some of the suggestions, um, that finance has made are not new suggestions, but maybe under prior administrations, it wasn't as much of a priority. And, um, certainly anytime you move to centralize or provide more oversight, you know, it can be uncomfortable because you have to figure out who's responsible for what, you have to have some difficult conversations. And it seemed like, and this again is the kind of my personal history with finance, it seemed like it would stall out periodically, obviously I wasn't a part of kind of all of the decision-making. So I think there's, one, a real commitment by the leadership. Um, I think, um, we also have a lot of team members who are really engaged. They actually wanted a new tool, as uncomfortable as it's been, I think people recognize you really couldn't continue to go on with spreadsheets or in some cases with paper documents, walked from one side of the War Memorial Courtyard to the other, um, in envelopes, daily.
Oh, sorry, what was this happening?
There was, there, I don't, like, pre-Workday, I don't know if it was as transpa- like, you were talking about really building from zero, like paper files. You, you, it's kind of one of those, I think Workday was an opportunity that it kind of, um, really brought some, some, some dark shadows to light and has really allowed us to, you know, resolve and find those efficiencies. So you, you may not have even known.
And, and also the type of system is different. So in the prior system, there was, there were, I think, two super users. Other than that, everyone had the same role and access, basically. And very few people actually used the accounting system. Like around the city, there weren't that many users. You gave it your paperwork or documentation or thing that needed to be done, your journal entry, to the one or two people or ten people in your agency that could do that entry. In Workday, many more users are interacting and they're interacting in different ways in, in, you know, whatever side of the system, whether it's HR or financial. Um, and so because there are more users, um, to, you know, the city of Baltimore, our employees' credit, they want to know how to do things. And, uh, what we've done, uh, in partnership with B-Sid, um, and HR, is create forums for them to do this. So for example, at the outset, the Workday Financial User Group wasn't called that and it actually didn't exist in the same format. But a couple of months in, we recognized that there needed to be a format where users, end users, could kind of self-solve problems or share information that was beyond kind of the regular updates that we were giving in the monthly meetings. And so that's why those sessions were created.
Got it. And then you, we'd also talked about, um, a couple of agencies. I don't wanna get into B-Sid, cause I know that's obviously sensitive. But as far as DPW and the water bill inaccuracies, what's been the communication with, um, DPW and trying to rectify that challenge?
So, uh, I will say, um, one of the things that I think will be really helpful, um, this audit year, and we're starting right from the beginning, um, and SB knows my request that, um, I'm sort of gonna be copied on those initial entrance, kind of kickoffs and conferences. I think one of the things that I saw was kind of a, um, where the rubber meets the road, some misunderstandings or communications. So there's some really real things that need to be fixed and Victoria can speak to kind of accounting adjustments. But there also was, the auditor asks a question and the agency thinks they've answered it and then it pauses. And that's not through, I think, anyone's fault. I think there's a, a better method of communication and that's something that the Department of Finance is committed to supporting. Um, you'll see on the slide for the water and wastewater billing, DPW goes through, um, many of the things that they've done to optimize the water billing. And I'll note, um, that while I've not been as involved in those, certainly, um, the water billing groups with the Office of Performance Innovation, um, their efforts, um, with the, I always say the acronym's wrong, but the CCSD, I think, their special group set up to look at collections and look at, um, revenue. Um, they've been doing some good work and have pulled us into that. And then within finance, we've established a cadence of regular meetings with DPW to really look at the range of things. Um, so not only just accounting, but also, um, procurement, budgets. Uh, we just feel that that's, um, appropriate given their size and complexity and because as they're making operational decisions, for example, on how to adjust maybe billing or accrediting, if we are in on those decisions and hear about them at the beginning, we can anticipate the impact that might have on the accounting side or the budget side.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee members? All right, looks like no one has signed up for testimony. Uh, is there anything else that we should be thinking about moving forward? I mean, challenges, opportunities, place? I mean, challenges, opportunities, places where we think are gonna grow? Just curious.
I'll, I'll start off just by saying that we're going to continue building the team. And it really does come down to people. We did not have people in place a couple of years ago. The pandemic was very, very tough on our staffing. And we've got an amazing accounting leader now in Victoria Raby, and she's continuing to build out that team. So I think you're gonna see the, the, the benefits of those people that we've just very recently put in place in the coming year.
I'll just add on the recruitment note that we are actively recruiting and growing the team. And, and just one more thing that I'm excited that we're doing. We're also conducting a baseline that the Director's Office is supporting. Victoria, while she's busy with the year-end duties to gather information from comparable jurisdictions and other local jurisdictions and really look again at our staffing so that we can develop what's the appropriate model. It hasn't been looked at in quite some time in accounting. And given that we have a new system, Victoria has already jumped in and is looking at reallocating portfolios and looking at what makes sense. And so as we begin to do some of that, we anticipate we'll be able to talk about some of those changes the next time we're back here as well.
Lots of continued process improvements, right? Lots of good things continue to come in not just the results you'll see for FY24 as well as FY25, right? Some of that growing room, right? We talk about the meetings and the trainings and the, the opportunities that we have, right? Like making those changes today impacts FY25. So really, really large step forward and, and good things from a financial reporting and grant reporting perspective on the horizon.
Yeah. And I would just add, I think the important part is that it's a priority that we see, you know, finance going through the process. And it's, you know, if there's a bump in the road, it isn't a setback. What it is, is treated as an opportunity to continue to improve, which I think is a different mindset than what we have seen in, in the past. And also want to thank the opportunity to be here today just to discuss this. Because I think the more that we talk about what are the opportunities, what are the challenges, the more that we have the opportunity to continue to improve within each of these individual processes.
Thank you for that. Any, any last comments?
Yeah. And so I think one of the opportunities, so in the beginning of Workday, there was a lot of work groups kind of building out like what the functionality was and, you know, what the current process is. And I think that, that was, there was a lot of synergy there. And I noticed in a lot of those meetings that there'd be some people who didn't, like, thought something was impossible. And then there'd be someone else in the room who's like, oh no, this is how I resolve it. And I think that in the recently, Department of Finance and Victoria has been, you know, bringing those, those key people back together. Also, I think in the past, and I think we're, we're starting to improve here, there was a very small number of subject matter experts. So if you wanted information, like when my department wanted to talk to someone, we could talk to one or two people. And then they, they were the, the gatekeepers. And I think that the opportunity there is to expand that across the city. And I think that the different work groups are, are heading in the right direction. But I think that is a key opportunity just for retention because people get burned out. And then also to spread out that knowledge so that people can go to more than one person for questions.
Thank you. Any, any last comments before we start prepping up?
Well, look, I'll, I'll just say, you know, the purpose of this committee is not to be adversarial, right? It's for us to work together. And so I do appreciate, you know, folks being forthcoming, sharing information. But also, and I would say even more importantly, looking at the, the roadmap forward, right? So how do we correct some of the missteps? How do we then prepare ourselves to go into another season? So again, we look forward to having more timely and accurate reports, but then also that we are all fully informed. So to, to our members of the committee, to the general public, we appreciate you taking the time and effort. And if there are no further comments or questions, we'll recess the hearing. So again, thank you all for your time. Thank you.